Good evening and welcome to the March 24th Danvers Zoning Board of Appeals hearing. I am the Chair, Corinne Darti, and the Board members are to my right, Jeff Sauer, to my far right, Jeff Sauer, to my right, Ken Schules, our clerk, to my left is Ken Jarvenin, and to my far left is John Bowner. From our Planning Department is our Planning Director, Brian Zakelli. The procedure for this evening, the clerk will read the docket. In your case, please proceed to the podium, present your case. The Board will then ask questions. We will open it up to community members to either ask questions or voice comments. It will then come back to the Board for deliberation. At this time, I ask everybody to silence any electronic devices that they have. And one other thing, when you approach the podium, please provide us with your name and your address. On to business. Board members, we are in receipt of minutes from the meeting of March 10th, 2025. Do I have any edits or comments? Hearing none, do I have a motion to accept?
So moved, Madam Chair.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. Clark, could you please read our first case?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Our first case is 141 Pine Street, Zoned R1. Request for a finding under Section 3.10 of the zoning bylaw to change or extend the non-existing, existing non-conforming uses landscape, retail, office, to allow additional non-conforming commercial uses, including personal retail services, takeout restaurant, retail, art gallery, or yoga/fitness studio. The request is made by 141 Pine Street Holdings, LLC, care of Nancy McCann Esquire, docket 25-5098.
Thank you very much. My name is Nancy McCann. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, 141 Pine Street Holdings, LLC. With me tonight is Jason Maury, who is the manager of the LLC and the owner of the property. And we are, in fact, requesting a finding to change or extend the non-conforming uses of the existing commercial building on the property to allow a more general variety of small business types of uses. This property, prior to zoning, in the mid-'40s in Danvers, was used as a coal and oil storage facility. It's been used as a non-conforming use since that time for various industrial and commercial uses. In 1997, the use was changed to another non-conforming use, which is a landscaping business. That landscaping business continues to operate. As of this date, Brookwood Landscaping, of which Mr. Maury is a principal, operates on the property. In 2004, there was a finding by this Board that allowed the existing building, that is, the commercial building that's perpendicular to Pine Street that you see in the lower right-hand corner of the, of the plan there, to be used for a variety of commercial uses. It allowed, in addition to the retail spaces associated with the landscaping business, it allowed three additional four, 400-square-foot office spaces to be used on the property. The problem that we've run into in the 2004 decision, as I've indicated in the application, it was extremely specific as to the types of uses. It allowed professional business and business consultants, appraisers, accountants, financial planners, graphic design, lawyers, commercial design, and tutors. But it excluded some retail uses. As a result of that specificity, it doesn't allow some other types of uses that are very similar to this. For example, when you say a graphic designer is permitted, but you don't list an interior designer, for example, then how that's typically interpreted as, is an interior design business wouldn't be permitted, but a graphic design business could be permitted. So as a result of the specificity, it's run into, it's caused a real limitation for the uses of this property for, simply for small commercial business and office types of uses that are in keeping with the types of businesses that were permitted in 2004. But they're different because they're not specifically listed here. There have been a couple of other findings since 2004. In 2011, there was a finding to allow one of the retail, one of the spaces, tenant spaces to be used for retail sales of ice cream and desserts. In 2012, there was a finding to allow a farmer's market on Saturdays. So we're here tonight seeking by finding to clarify the broader types of uses that can be used here, which will allow the owner of the property and prospective tenants some flexibility for uses that can go into the building that, and all of which would not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. The existing building is there. It consists of five 400-square-foot tenant spaces. So these are very small spaces. Total square footage of the building is just 2,000 square feet. We are proposing no addition to the building. We're not proposing any alteration to the site itself. The building went through site plan review with the Planning Board back in 2004, when the, the 2004 finding was granted, and we're not seeking any changes to that. We're simply here to request a finding to allow some clarity and confirmation of the types of uses that can be used here. And we are specifically requesting a finding to allow personal retail service, generally, bless you, personal retail services, that's defined under the bylaw, professional office use under 2,500 square feet, retail office, retail sales, excuse me, under 2,500 square feet, takeout, coffee, or sandwich type of shop, retail sales indoors, retail sales outdoors of seasonal merchandise, and fitness, yoga-type of studios, and similar types of uses that, to those that would fall under those general categories of uses. Again, we think that those uses are in keeping with what the property has been used for. We have had, and currently, the property is occupied by, the landscaping business occupies two of the tenant spaces, and two of the other tenant spaces are occupied by a hair salon. So we have two hair salons. Both of those hair salons have been on the property with business certificates issued by the town for a number of years. And recently, the Planning Office has advised Mr. Maury that those uses are not permitted on the property because they're personal service uses, even though they've been there for many years. Again, indicating that there just simply needs to be some clarification to, which would allow those two hair salons, for example, to remain, without the finding that we're requesting those salons could not, could not exist on the property. We feel that those small business uses would not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing non-conforming uses that have been on the property for many, many years. As an aside, this property was the subject of a rezoning petition. That was not a petition by the owner of the property. It was by the, by the Planning Board to rezone this to Tapleyville, and that met resistance. And the primary reason, I believe, that that met resistance, having been to those, those hearings and listened to that, was Tapleyville allows residential. We are not seeking residential use here. We are simply seeking to clarify and broaden what types of commercial uses can be permitted on the property. So again, we're not seeking residential use. We are not seeking to alter the building in any way or the site in any way. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Chair?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I understand what you guys want to do, and I agree. However, I need a little clarity because in your application, where it says, "Finding, request to extend the non-conforming uses to include personal retail service, takeout, sandwich, coffee shop, retail, art gallery, and yoga/fitness." And then in the narrative, you have a different list, and in our voting guide, we have a third list. So I just want to make sure that we know what we're voting on. And in terms of the narrative, the personal retail service, professional office space, retail sales, takeout coffee, I have no problems with any of those, but I will not vote to agree to unlimited outdoor seasonal merchandise. I think, I would just like that one struck from the...
I'd like a point of clarification. So the legal ad is personal retail service, takeout restaurant, retail, art gallery, yoga/fitness. And that should be what the voting guide says, because that's all, that's the, that's the full, yep, so that is what the voting, so I, I believe that the legal ad and the voting guide are exactly the same.
Okay.
As far as the narrative goes, that actually...
Is that the list?
That is not what was in the legal ad.
Is that what, is that the list that Nancy wants?
I am happy with the list that is in the legal ad.
Yeah, yeah.
No, that's good.
This is the legal ad. This is the full breadth that you can give. You can always go more narrow.
Sure.
The full amount is what is in the legal ad.
Okay, so, personal retail service, takeout restaurant, retail, art gallery, or yoga/fitness studio?
Exactly.
Okay. Well, thank you for clarifying that.
Oh, sorry. I was just gonna make a comment. May I make a comment?
Yes.
It should also probably say hairdresser.
So, personal retail service, I can, I can, I can give that definition because that's actually extremely important. So, personal retail service is, this is a tough one for me, sorry, esthetician, sorry. Barber shop, beauty shop, caterer, dry cleaner, film developing and printing, that's a good one, florist, laundering, laundering shoes, shoe cleaning or repair, travel agency, tailor, and other businesses providing similar services of a personal nature.
That's a pretty broad category, then.
Right.
Yeah.
And, yeah, the Planning Department felt that if it didn't specifically say personal, I mean, that's a very large category that had been operating essentially without, you know, by no fault of their own. They applied for a business certificate, they got it, they feel they can operate.
Right.
Totally get it.
Okay. I'm all, I'm all set. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Chair, through you, Brian. So as we see, we, you know, they've come before us several times, and, you know, I just feel like, how many different things can we have on this list?
Ken, you bring up a very good point, which is...
I mean, it could go on forever, a list.
Well, so this was actually the impetus from the department, which did not come from the owner and did not come from the Planning Board. It was from the department going through the docket of this property, showing finding after finding after finding. So it was like, it was like, clearly everyone wants this to stay commercial. Why don't we just get it in there? We thought it was, we didn't, you know, it made most, it made most sense to be within Tapley. That didn't work, so, so that's why we're here.
I mean, is there something we, that can't go in there that's commercial? Is, I guess what I'm getting at?
I think the whole point is to, is to make this...
If it's commercial, it's commercial, whatever it is.
That's what we were, we were, we were trying to, the only thing we didn't do was make it solely commercial, but then that, only that parcel and the one across the street would be commercial.
Right.
Tapley made the most sense because it involved a lot of commercial uses that they were trying to do. So we thought it made the most logical sense, but totally true that there, there was, there was concern from residents for dense housing, so they didn't want to change it to the Tapley, so it kind of has no place.
Yep. Okay. I don't have any other questions. Thank you.
Ken?
I have no questions.
John?
Hi. Thank you, Madam Chair. I just have a couple. So, I just, and maybe this is something I don't understand. So, what prevents, say, a car dealership from going in here?
Can't do that.
It's not on the list.
It's not on the list.
Not on the, all right. So we're defining the list, and, Madam Chair, through you, Brian, so the personal retail, is that defined by our bylaws, or is that a state?
I just read that out of our zoning bylaw.
That's, that's Danvers only. It's not a state-defined list. Okay. And so I guess, Attorney McCann, if, I think, when I visited the site, I think one's a spa and one's a hairdresser. Does that sound right out of the two?
I think the spa is primarily hairdressing, but also esthetician type of uses.
But is it two separate businesses?
Yes.
And then, is there an open tenant right now?
Yes.
Okay. So I guess, and I read the plot plan, and it's 24 parking spots, and I think a couple handicap. What does planning get involved, although it's not us? Say a business comes in there, like a takeout, and they, like, how do we know the parking always works depending on the makeup of the four tenants, the side of the contractor yard and landscaping function?
Well, there's plenty of parking on this site, really, significantly more than required. However, when a, a new business comes in and they go for a business certificate, that's part of what's reviewed, is to make sure that there's enough parking that meets the parking requirements under the bylaw.
Okay, so is, are the parking requirements defined on the square footage of the business?
Depends on the use, but yes, for the uses that we're talking about, personal service, for example, is one space per 250 square feet.
Okay, so there's a math equation, and that's, and, and so for this 2K of square footage, how many spots are required? And you said we have more than enough.
Eight to 10.
Eight to 10. So we're more than double. Okay. And I think that's all I had. Thank you.
I, I just have one question and one comment. So there isn't right now a, a takeout restaurant that's in there, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Would that change the calculus with regard to the parking spaces? Because I know restaurants, it's square footage, how many tables, and all of that. But a strictly takeout restaurant, what is the parking requirements for that?
Based on seats, number of seats.
So, so it's the same even for takeout?
I'm, I'm getting it.
Okay.
Because every use has a different thing. Sometimes it's number of people on the most amount of shift minus two, like, it's a very complicated formula for each of them, so I don't, and probably will never have those, but...
Takeout, takeout restaurant, no, is two per 250 square feet.
So it's the same as commercial, it's essentially the same as normal commercial.
Okay, so you, you clearly have plenty of parking
Right.
on, on the, on the site. And I agree with Jeff, as far as that retail sales, outdoor seasonal merchandise, I'm not for that. I, I think it, it, it's not a good location for it, and I also think it's, it's still kind of crowded to have something, some outdoor merchandise sales, so...
There, there is currently, by the prior variances that, or sorry, findings that have been granting and determinations, there is outdoor sales of landscaping merchandise.
Oh, actually, can you go up to the microphone and just repeat that? I know you're, you're the, the manager of the site.
I am Jason Maury. I live at 24 Brookwood Lane here in town. Been here for 55 years. The site, prior to myself purchasing it, there was a garden center under operation there for probably nine or 10 years. It's called Sweet Williams Farms. They had outdoor tables, flowers, plants. They sold bulk mulch, sand, that kind of thing. So aside of the landscaping operation being in the back, there was retail garden supplies and home goods sold on that property.
Okay.
And I think that is in one of the first findings that came before planning back in 2004.
Right. And then there was also the finding allowing the farmer's market on Saturdays.
Yeah, I don't see it on our docket.
Quick point. But if the, after non-use of a certain number of years, I would imagine that that use kind of goes away.
The outdoor sales of landscaping types of things was associated with the landscaping office use, which is still going forward. I don't know about the farmer's market.
I mean, generally, any, yes, thing, well, variances run with the land, but findings and special permits, if there's inaction of three years, it essentially reverts to where it was. Since the landscaping business is, has always been operating, then I would definitely say that those, those, those outdoor sales uses are allowed because the landscaping business has always been operating, even though a farmer's market makes sense. And, but, I'm sorry, after three years, it, it reverts back to not being, that, that not being allowed. So any finding that you give tonight for this whole, it's only really good for about three years until they get a tenant. If they can't get a tenant, let's say they can't get an art gallery in the next three years, they would probably have to come back to the Board for that use.
Okay.
I, I agree, but that's the law.
Madam Chair, through you, effectively.
Yes.
Attorney McCann, I, I guess what I want to understand is, we're defining through your application, personal retail, takeout, retail, art gallery, yoga/fitness studio. Are you under the understanding that if you don't get one of these specific uses within the next three years, you would be back here?
I actually don't agree with that. I think the finding can be exercised that will allow these types of uses, and we start to have these types of uses if we get a personal service in, and that exercises the finding. We have the, within the three years, we have the right to do these other things. I don't think we lose that. What I think we, I agree that if the farmer's market specifically hadn't been used for three years, then that one is a non-conforming use that we would lose. But the finding is to allow this, a bundle of uses, and how, and as it's advertised here, to allow additional non-conforming commercial uses, including these, these items here. So I think if we can include those and get those in, and we're going to do that immediately because we already have personal service there, which will become legalized, if you will, within the eyes of the, of code enforcement, once we get this finding. So those tenants who have been there will be able to stay, and the... And the new vac, the new tenant who will go, and we only have one vacant space, they would be able to have some flexibility to be able to operate these various different types of businesses.
Attorney McCann, I agree with your reading. I think as long as we grant it with all of these various uses, as long as you use something from the list, you're exercising your right. So even if, even if you don't use a yoga studio in four years, if someone moves out, you could have a yoga studio move in.
Right.
But I do think as far as the outdoor retail space, that was in 2004, that was part of that finding. But it does say it was granted with conditions referred to the docket files, so I would be interested to see with those. I'm sure they were pretty, pretty, pretty onerous restrictions as far as what you could do.
I do have them here. Let's see. 2004. It had some hours listing as far as the, the retail sales, eight to six, Monday through Saturday, and Sunday, 10 to 4, standard. And, that was really it, because they allowed the, the sales associated with the landscaping business. And then after, so that was the limitation on the sales, it had to do with the landscaping business. And then later, sales were allowed in another unit simply for the ice cream.
Yes.
And, so that was kind of a separate thing. But the outdoor sales was associated with the landscaping business.
And they didn't have any seasonal requirements, like April through June or anything like that?
They did not. I'm looking again, they did not.
Yeah, I don't remember that either.
No.
I think it was year round.
Yeah, no, I think that was before my time. Okay, anyone from the audience have any comments, questions?
Joanne Rigucci, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 2. I know we have a neighbor of 141 right over here, and that's why I wanted to make sure he was okay with it. I think what, what's being proposed by the property owner, the manager, is, I think it's fine. And just like a sidebar, where we, the neighborhood did not want Tapleyville to come that far back up Pine Street. It was really infringing upon the neighbors and, and kind of, and also had, was a danger of infringing upon Rebecca Nurse, the property which abuts 141. So I feel that with this list, and as long as they stick to this list, it would be great if we could have outdoor things. But I think with the seasonal, and you have Tapley Park with all the baseball, and across the street, they use that parking for overflow during the season, it's a very busy area during the months of like May to August. So as long as they stick to that list, it doesn't infringe upon the neighborhood, and it's not detrimental to the neighborhood. I, I agree with it. I think it will help the landlord.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Comments, questions?
Hi folks, Phil Bolduc, Pine Street. So I live just up the street from this location. After hearing was presented, I'm more confused than ever. So, as I understand it, this is residential one, and all these commercial usages, usages have been grandfathered in or added over the years. So where is the concise list of what's authorized and what isn't? I'm, I'm lost. I mean, it, it seems like right now, it's kind of any commercial usage under the sun, but we won't call it commercial.
Brian, maybe you could answer?
Yeah, I mean, we can, we can develop the list, or I'm sure the, the petitioners can say everything. But it's, it's based upon the docket history, meaning the petitioners coming in front of the board. And I can go through them right now, and then, if, if you'd like.
I would. And, and just to be clear, you're saying this is going back to 1940, when zoning came in, and that every subsequent petition adds on to the approval for this site?
So, no, that's a good question. So there were these coal and basically mostly industrial-type uses on this site, pre-zoning. So zoning was in the 40s, this happened, I think it was early 1900s. So any of the uses that were on the ground at the time, basically, you know, they, they become what's called pre-existing non-conforming, they can continue to operate. But if they stop operating for more than three years, that non-conforming, they don't get that protection anymore. So it's been this like constant like hurdle of things, where they're doing uses that they get permission for, such as landscaping, and there was an ice cream, you heard there was an ice cream, they can't do ice cream anymore. So anything that was not used for three years, they can't then go back to them. So as of right now, they are looking to do landscaping, retail and offices, which is what they're allowed to do right now. That's what they're allowed to do right now and no more. They want to do landscaping, retail office, and then add the things that we were just talking about. Personal retail service, takeout restaurant, retail art gallery, or yoga fitness. So that's the full breadth. Those, the, the only thing is that personal retail service incorporates many uses. But it's not like any uses that they got a, a finding for in the past, that they're just allowed to kick in again. So the list isn't necessarily growing. It grows and shrinks over time, the way that the uses go. Does that answer your question?
So in approving tonight, will those uses be defined not just as added on, but, no kidding, here are the sole uses that are approved as of this-
Definitely.
We'll read them right in.
The decision will incorporate all of the, all of the known uses, so that everyone is aware of what, and especially the owner, of what they can do and what they can't do. So that will be into the decision, and we can send a copy of the decision to you.
Yes, please. And then just one question, there's no requirement currently within zoning regarding light trespass, nuisance noise, anything like that? That would affect this site?
Well, there's a couple of things in there. So, you know, nuisance law is state law, which is police, not necessarily zoning. We did have a light trespass law come before Town Meeting that was basically referred back for more study. So the plan is the planning board is going to work on that and try to bring it at a later date, most likely February of next year. Not for this May. So we, we typically have, it would typically be, yeah, next year, in February for zoning. So that, that's the timeframe for their, for light trespass, and you said a third.
No, no, just-
Okay, just like, yeah, so.
So there's no really avenue to address those in this process tonight?
You can lim, so in this process, you are allowed to talk about times, you know, times of, of, of use, because it's a, because this is a non-conforming use, there's more control of the board. So they can, you can talk about certainly, certainly times, there's no construction here, so that's, that's at least good, meaning that we don't have to talk about construction times for new things. It's really just, when can they operate?
Well, that's, one of my concerns is that with the existing use, there is quite a bit of nuisance noise. Anybody who goes down to Tapley will observe the light trespass. It's lit up like a Christmas tree. And so as they're making these changes and reviewing different ways that they can get new tenants in there, I'd only ask that those issues also be addressed.
Please elaborate, like, what would you want the board to, to look at?
Some simple things. So the lighting in the parking lot, floodlights that go out in all directions. If you drive from Adams Street onto Pine Street, you'll get blinded. There are a lot of small, small things that they could do, I think, that would make this site and these businesses integrate better into the community, into the neighborhood.
I don't know if the board has any questions on what they could potentially do for putting lighting more down towards the parking lot, or different types of lights?
Well, I guess Attorney McCann, can you just, do you have an idea or handle on how many lights are in that parking lot?
I do not know how many lights there are in the parking lot. This did go through site plan review, as I said, back in 2004. I, Ja, yeah, Jason, why don't you come up, and you're familiar with the lighting?
So the lights actually belong to the electric light department, so if there's an issue with how bright they are, they're the ones to talk to, because they put them in. I leave them from them. And whatever they're using for lumens or LED, that's just the way they are. But there's four lights.
Four, four for the entire lot?
Shine pretty much straight down. In the summer, it's not nearly as bad, because there's plenty of tree canopy. In the wintertime, you can see it when you make the turn.
I mean, we, the, the department has not received, I mean, I'm hearing it now, but this is the first time that I've heard concern regarding the lighting, and there's no record of, of anyone in the past doing this.
As far as the noise go, I'm, I'm unaware of any noise issues whatsoever. There's never been any complaints that have, that have been brought to our attention. Where we close at 4 o'clock in the afternoon, everyone's gone, so, I don't know. It's news to me.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. Bradstreet, I mean, Attorney McCann, would you like to, okay, Mr. Bradstreet?
Bill Bradstreet, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 1. When you talk about the lighting up there belongs to the town, is that specifically the lighting for the park where games are played, and not lighting that's provided by the town to light up man's property? My question would be if it's the town's property, then the town is responsible for directing the light on its use for the park and not flooding his property with light that he doesn't need or want? That's my question, depends on. Sorry to-
Jason Maury again. Hey, so I know there's lighting on Auto-Molten Lane. It's the same light fixtures that are used on our property, so maybe the two kind of integrate. But I think you're referring to the ball field lights, which are only put on it during nighttime and when they have night games. So I don't think that's related. Oh, I don't know. I think they light up the whole planet, the, the ball field lights.
When, when lighting has been discussed in the past, seems to me, not the same thing, but on 114, it's directional lighting, cone down to light up what is necessary. It's not flooding, or not trying to light up the sky. If the gentleman wants lighting to light up his property, that's fine. If the town has been so generous to put up lighting that floods the sky, I think exception to the town doing that. Because they should be lighting up only what needs to be lit, not flooding the sky. I mean, let me show you a picture from space of what United States looks like. It's, it's a light bulb, wasted energy. And I don't care what happens in certain spots, lighting is unnecessary, a lot of it. I'm in favor of what he's doing, it's just that I think it's, the lighting situation needs to be addressed, not his necessarily, but the town's.
I, I agree. And, and obviously, this isn't really his issue, because it's the town that, that maintains this light, correct?
Correct. And could that be adjusted? I, I suppose the targets are the parking lot.
The only thing I can tell you is that we can talk with the, with the electric department and, and go from there, but, and, and with doing, but I, you know, I don't know, I'll be honest.
What is the reason for the town lights on private property?
I, I don't know when these lights were installed and what, but they obviously thought that this was what was necessary for, for the site.
I think it happens more common than you, you would, you would realize, but the lights belong, the, the poles and the wires and the overhead all go through the property. They belong to the town, and we pay like a monthly-
Yeah, no.
Rent for the lights. And I think it happens a lot on commercial properties.
It could. I'm just wondering, like, specifically on this property, and it could be because at one time, it was, the, the train went through there. So it was the rail, the MBTA, so.
Yeah, but the lights, the, the new, the fixtures that are on there now, I would, I would imagine they've, they're less than 25 years old, is what I would imagine.
Oh, no, no, but I'm saying like, so they just continue to maintain it?
Yeah.
Is what I'm saying.
Oh, no, no, I mean, we own, we own, in terms of the commercial properties, the Electric Light Company, I mean, yeah, it's all our stuff.
Yep, okay. All right, so, I don't know, if, if you want to contact someone just to see what's up?
You know, I can certainly, you, you could put, something in this, in the decision could be to minimize, even though anything that they would, you would want them to do would still have to be okayed by the Electric Light Division.
Correct.
But you could just say strive, you know, you, you, I'm trying to think of something that actually makes sense, but it really wouldn't be the petitioner doing that work, it would be the town.
Right, I agree.
So I think it would be onerous to put it on him personally.
Yeah, no, and, and it's really not fair. I agree. Okay, any, Mr. Bradstreet, do you have another question or comment?
Give Bill Bradstreet a comment. This is Danvers, nice little town. We try to be very generous to the residents and people who like to come and visit. But I think, as was said, I think it might be a good time to review what the town is lighting. We all pay taxes, it pays for this lighting. Some of it might be very useful, but I, I've heard it commented that sometimes the town's lighting tends to flood the sky with lighting. It's not directional. And I wouldn't be trying to sleep necessarily if I slept early, and when I have to deal with the town lighting up a spot for the benefit of other people, being very selfish. But I think that it might be a good time for the town to do a little review on what they do like, and how they're spending our money.
Sounds about right.
Yep, sounds, sounds right. Okay, any other comments or questions? All right, Jeff?
I will vote for this, except for the outdoor storage.
Ken?
I will vote for this.
Ken?
I'll vote for this.
John?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I just want to make a comment too, that I, I did visit the site, and I, I commend the owner. I think it's well-cared-for. It looks like you keep it together, so I have no problem voting for this use change.
And I will vote for this, I will vote for this too. I agree with Jeff without the outdoor condition on it, and since it's not in the voting guide, it's not part of it anyway.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to issue a finding under Section 3.10 of the zoning bylaw to change or extend the existing non-conforming uses landscaping, retail, office, to allow additional non-conforming commercial uses, including personal retail service, takeout restaurant, retail, art gallery, or yoga fitness studio, and that the proposed extension slash alteration of the use is not substantially, substantially more detrimental than the existing structure to the neighborhood.
I will second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much.
Our next case is 1A Venice Street, Zone R1. Request for a variance to construct a garage slash shed that is proposed to be located 3.7 feet from the side property line, where eight feet is required. The request is made by Christopher Stowe, docket 25-5099.
Hi, Christopher Stowe, 1A Venice Street, Danvers. I'm trying to have a shed slash garage built on the property. It's 3.7 feet from the property line, eight feet's required. The, the reason I'm trying to do this at that is because I have a yard and I have a fence, and I need storage for some properties that I've had, and I have some stuff located in different areas that I'd like to put on my property.
Okay, thank you. John?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Stowe, I'm a little confused. Is this a shed, or is it a garage?
So it's a, it's a, it's a roll-off. They call it a shed, because it-
It'll have a garage door?
Yeah, it'll have a garage door, it'll have a side door with windows and like flower pot or something like that.
Okay, and I've visited your-
It has a floor.
And it has a floor as well?
Yeah. So I can put, I'm, I'm hoping to be able to put like a little, you know, like a bench out there and like be able to do stuff, because we don't have basements in that area. So you tend to collect a lot.
So this is in place of the carport that's there?
Yes.
Currently?
Yes.
And I, I'm just trying to understand, so, are you, you own the entire building?
No, I own one side, the, the 1A side.
And, and your neighbor owns, it's a condo?
Yes.
It's two condos?
Yeah, townhouse condo, yes.
All right. But how does the land- But how does the land separate it between the two of you? Or is it not?
No, it is. We, I have the, the plot plan.
So on the, there's a fence that goes through the property, but it's one, it's a two fam, it's essentially a duplex.
Yes.
But, but there's a fence that goes right through the middle of each side. If you look here, I'll blow this up here.
Yeah, I'm looking at it.
But yeah, it's one property is the, is, if that's what you're asking, it's one property.
Well, I guess I'm, I guess so my question is, why couldn't the garage be put or shed, garage shed, be put on the left-hand side?
On the left-hand side of their property?
Yeah.
Not their property?
Because it's not my property.
So you're only here for 1A and that?
Yes, 1A, yes.
That space.
Yep.
And it's 12 by 24?
Yes.
And you're not planning to park vehicles in it?
No, I'm gonna put, I'm trying to put like a, my storage, like a little workbench in there because like I said, we don't have a basement and I'm just.
Sure. So, Madam Chair, through you, if I could go to Brian?
Yes.
So Brian, because this is an oversized shed, right, we allow a 10 by 12 by right. If he was doing a 10 by 12 and at five feet, he would just be pulling a permit?
10 by 12, five feet, he would be pulling a permit, but he wouldn't have 10 feet of separation from the house.
Which is also required, okay.
Yeah.
Very good, I get it. No further questions.
Ken?
So the, the existing carport, is that, did you have to come to the board for, to have that put there and was it approved or is that just a?
That's portable type of thing.
Temporary?
Temporary.
Okay.
Yeah, I had lawn furniture and stuff I had got from my mother when she passed and I just says, I gotta put something up, you know.
Yeah, so in the backyard, you have the patio, the gazebo?
Yeah.
That's also temporary, but you have the patio listed here on your print. So I was wondering if that was something that, so that just confused me, that the temporary gazebo is on there in a, in a print in your plan, your plot plan, and then the temporary garage wasn't. I mean, you can see the proposed.
Yeah, that's because that, that tent is fairly new out there. I don't know if he had to put that on the plot plan because he did come by and that plot plan is fairly new.
It's a temporary, yeah, sorry, sorry, yeah, it's a structure, it's a, not, it's not a structure yet. It's a temporary structure which wouldn't necessarily be on the plan, so that's, that's why.
He just put it on?
Yeah, well, the fact that he can, it's not a permanent structure and he can easily just grab it away, it's not really, wouldn't really be on a certified plot plan.
Oh, I know, but the, so the patio though is also.
Well, patio's stonework on the ground. That's impervious, anything impervious basically needs to go.
All right, so that's the, the concrete slab?
Yeah.
Okay, gotcha. All right. I have no other questions.
Thank you.
Ken?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you, so Brian, because he has a 24 by 12 building here, he has to be 10 feet off of the dwelling?
No, it's, so it's not a requirement, the 10 feet, but fire department generally likes 10 feet between buildings, one so that they can get anything they need through there and also for fire, so for, so that fires don't spread to, to other buildings. You generally want to have 10 feet. What they potentially could do is keep the 10 feet of separation and then shave off a cup, you know, it'd be one foot in the front and 1.3, so you know, it could be, you could keep the 10 and they could be five feet potentially, but they're not at 120. So I'm, I'm just saying that the only options here are to, if you, are to keep the 10 and either shrink this, and either shrink it or, or not.
So they can infringe on that 10 feet?
It's advised not to.
I'd rather them do that than to infringe on the, on the setback on the side. I guess that's what I'm saying is, I mean, is that?
So we don't have a comment from, I guess I'll be clear, we don't have a comment from the fire department, meaning they, you know, we send these out, if we, if we had, if they had a concern, they would, they would say something. They didn't have a concern, but they're also not going to say, oh, the 10 feet's good and we're all good. If they're good, they don't say anything. So if you're changing, yeah.
Yeah, well, we only have to go another foot on one end and a foot and a half on the other.
Yeah, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be much and at least it would be.
Is it really infringing that much on that 10 feet is what I'm asking? With the, with the fire department and say, oh, no way, it's nine feet now.
I just don't want to speak for them. That's, that's, that's the issue.
Okay. I guess I'll just wait for comments, no other questions.
I have no questions, Madam Chairman, thank you.
I do have a couple of questions. This seems like it's a very big shed. You already have another shed in the back, correct?
Yes.
You have the patio, you have the awning, so there's a lot of stuff going on. And I see that this is, this is somewhat of like a prefabbed or are they coming in to build this shed?
No, it's, it's fully built.
Okay.
It's a roll-off.
Okay.
Shed.
So, well, it, it says on, on the sheet, this pricing, pricing sheet, that it's, it said 12 by 24 and it was crossed out to 12 by 28?
Oh, no, there's two prices on there. They made a mistake. I have, I have the, another one here.
Okay.
There were two different companies that I put on there. One had a layout.
Yes, I see the layout one. So in other words, you, you got two quotes from two separate companies?
Yeah.
Did, did these companies also have sheds that might be a little bit smaller?
I believe probably they would. I'm just, I'm just trying to put on like what I have or would like to have there to make, like, you know, like so I can put a workbench out there, so I can put my tires and wheels out there from my other vehicle, my vehicle that I drive now, you know. I have two kids and, you know, they have stuff too. We don't have really addicts over there as well.
I understand. And, and a question for Brian, how close is this, is this to the front?
19.1.
Oh, okay. All right, I see. I thought for some reason it went to the back. All right, I, I kind of wish it, it was smaller, like even if it was, if it was 10 foot instead of 12, instead of 12 feet, if it was 10 and maybe not 24 feet, just a little bit smaller, I know it means that you would, you would have less area to store things in, but it would get you off the side property line, but still allow you the 10 feet for the fire department. So that, that's my only comment at this point. Anybody from?
Yeah, this, Madam Chair, well, yeah, so Brian, this is actually infringing on the front setback as well, correct? Because it's 20 in R1. Is that correct?
Um.
I mean, at 19.1, R1's front setback is 20 feet, right?
Hold on.
Or is it because it's a two family, it's still 20 feet?
No, no, it's still 20, hold on.
Side and rear are eight and front is 20. And I, according to the plot plan, he's be looking to go to 19.1. So he's basically looking for relief from the front setback and the side setback.
Uh, this is my mistake. I missed this.
No worries.
So.
I just wanted to point that out.
Yeah, so that means that as drawn, or sorry, as advertised, it would have to be 12 by 23.
To get it in that setback.
Or get, or, yeah, so this is my mistake and I'm sorry.
So it, it makes it, I guess, more important, or, I mean, if he did a smaller one, then he could fit it.
If he did a smaller one, it wouldn't, it wouldn't matter.
Right. No, no, but I'm saying we could get it farther than, what is it, 3.7 feet? If we, if we did 10 by the back and if we did instead of 24 even, and I don't know because these are prefab, so.
So the prefab, so generally, you don't need a building permit for anything under 200 square feet, so I bet you they make a 12 by 10.
Yeah, but could he get something bigger than?
Sorry, sorry, I don't mean a 12, I didn't mean that, a 12 by 10.
12 by 20.
12 by 20.
A 12 by 20 would get you, what would that be, 240, 240 square feet. But that would at least get you 10 feet off of the building, more than 20 feet off the front and five feet off the side, which generally even, so this is a little, it's obviously double 120, but at least it would be more in line with, with garages in town that are five feet from the property line and that's okay. So you could authorize a 10 by 20, a 10 by 20.
Yeah, I think the real solution here is a 10 by 20.
I think that, and that, and so, yeah, so that is 200. So a 10 by 20 is a standard.
10 by 20, not 12 by 20.
Right, and then.
10 by 20.
10 by 20.
10 by 20.
Right, and then we wouldn't, we wouldn't have to worry about the front?
We wouldn't have to worry about the front, we would be five, you'd be five feet off the side and 200, and 200 is a standard size for.
For him to purchase.
But Mike.
Only because you can get building permits, you don't even need a building permit for 200. He needs zoning conformance, but you actually don't need a building permit if you, if it's under 200 square feet.
So, but through you, Madam Chair, I guess my question is, so if he did a 10 by 20, would he even needed the finding?
He would still need the side because he, he still is over 120, 120 square feet, so he still needs the side. He still needs the side, so I think that's where it's, yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Sorry.
We've totally lost you, haven't we?
We figured out your problem for you though.
I'm, I'm not good with the plans of any of this. I got them, I had the plot plan looked at and I still look at it and I was out there yesterday trying to take measurements and I'm like, I, I don't know, I don't understand any of it.
Madam Chair, can I, can I ask one more question?
Sure.
So when I was at your property, you know, the temporary carport you have?
Yeah.
And your fence, so that fence is the property line or is not? Is it, is it slightly inside?
It's very close. Yeah, it's pretty close. There's enough room, probably like a foot maybe.
Okay.
Yeah, because I made sure I had enough room if I had to repair or if the neighbors ever wanted to be.
And would you be all right with going down to a 10 by 20 size?
Yeah, we could probably make something like that work, yeah.
And.
12 by 20 would be great, but you know, I mean, I know we're trying to get the setbacks and.
Yeah, I think that might be the best of both worlds, but that's, I'm just asking.
He could go to 10 by 22 if that was a size that could make, but.
Yeah, they, they would do a special.
Well, you can always, you can give, you can give the biggest that you're willing to go to and then he can make it smaller, it just has to be in there.
Right, okay.
So you could say 12 by 22, or sorry, 10 by 22.
No larger than 10 by 22.
Yeah, no larger than 10 by, yeah.
I would, I would be, I would be okay with that.
And that way, and that way you would be 20 off the front, which you have to be, you would be five off the side, which is better than, you know, 3.7, and you would still have that 10 feet away for the fire department in case of an emergency.
Okay. So, so the, five feet off the side, is that like you're talking where like the fence is or the driveway?
Your property line.
Where the property line is about a foot from there, so it would come in about four feet.
You'd be 5.7, right?
What would it be?
You'd be 5.7 off the property line.
Yeah, because if you're just gonna, you're just taking two feet off, it would be 5.7 and 6.1.
And you're keeping it the 10.
Yeah, so, so the size of the shed, I believe, actually is not 12 feet, it's 11 2 or 11.7.
All right, so you're wrong.
You've got overhangs too on the.
Yeah, the overhangs on the roof.
They count.
They don't count, that's included.
Yeah, so.
Okay.
So the, I guess the 12 by 22, I mean, 10 by 22?
10 by 22, maintaining at least five feet on the side is, that's what it is. Because you got to do both, because if you just say 10 by 22, you're giving relief for what you don't want. So you have to have, we have to change, yeah, whoever's making a motion has to do both of those things.
Okay. Any comments from the audience before we begin deliberations?
I thank the applicant for working with us and I will vote for this.
Ken?
Yeah, I'll vote for this on the 10 by 22 max size.
Ken?
I'll also vote for this with a maximum 10 by 22 size.
John?
Yes, I'm in agreement. I just want to be clear though through Brian, so we're defining in the finding, the setback allowed or the size?
Both, because what they've applied for is 3.7.
So we're gonna go to 5.7 and 6.1?
Well, you just, you could do that, or if you just want to say maintain five and the max, you could say maintain a five-foot setback at least and.
Minimum of five.
And a maximum square footage of 10 by 22.
10 by 22, very good. So I too will vote for this.
And I will vote for this as well with these changes.
Would you like a motion?
Yes, please.
Madam Chair, I move to motion, motion to issue a variance under table two of the zoning bylaw to construct a garage slash shed that is proposed to be located no closer than five feet from the front, from the side property line where eight feet is required and a shed slash garage size no larger than 10 by 22. The proposed extension/alteration of the use is not substantially more detrimental than the existing structure to the neighborhood.